Good evening.
Hey, guys.
Hi, everybody.
Hello?
Biddings.
How's everybody?
Great.
Good.
Doing well.
Buddy.
Last day to day chief, huh?
Barb, how are you? Chuck? Who's that? Who's that guy with that short haircut? Does anybody know who that is? Everybody's been razzing John today on Zoom meetings. I think Friday or Thursday, I said, man, your hair's getting long, John. Longer than mine. And I don't have any.
My thirty-three-year-old son's hair is longer than mine right now because he has not cut it since COVID started. And his sister is very jealous because her hair is shorter. Is everybody psyched about going to blue level?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There. We're already in blue, Barb. We, uh, Friday, we went to blue.
So and everybody just came to Idaho Springs to celebrate, right?
Busy weekend, yes.
If you did, that's for sure. By the way, I just happened to think that my grandfather said your hair either turns gray or turns loose. For what that's worth.
Thanks, Bob.
Pretty good.
I think I've got both going on.
Yeah, you do. But that's all right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to pull out my picture from eight years ago and put it next to my current picture. See how my, my hair's changed or my, you know, my wrinkles have changed.
You've, you've pulled them out during your hair out during the two terms in office? Is that the story?
It's like you said, either falling out or turning gray. I think I got both of them going on. All right, let's see. Who are we missing? Art will not be with us tonight. Scott Pennell. Andy, did you hear from Scott? Okay, we'll wait a couple more minutes then for Scott, see if he comes on. Nothing. One, two, three, four, five, six, and Scott. You want to text? You want to try to text Scott, see if he's gonna be on, Andy?
Yes.
Yep. Wait a minute. Okay, he said he's gonna be a couple of minutes late. He just texted me.
Okay.
We'll give him two more minutes. Hey, Gary, how are you?
Howdy, how are you?
Greetings.
Good to see Bob.
Good to see ya.
Hey, Gary, how are you?
Barb, it's been a minute. Good to see you well.
So you just always have a bike in the background, Gary? That's part of the image?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Let's go with that. It's, I'm actually trying to turn it into an indoor place to work on my bikes here in my office because the garage is really cold.
And how much does that thing weigh? What, five pounds?
Uh, that bike is probably thirty-four pounds.
Oh, it's a heavy one, though, then. Is that a?
Bikes are not getting lighter these days. They're, they're getting heavier.
That's a, that's a, um, that's a downhill bike?
That's a trail bike, yeah.
It's a trail bike? Okay, yeah. I know some of those road bikes are really light.
Yeah, no, those, yeah, those are completely different animals.
Get up with one finger.
Yeah, they're barely related.
Ten grand for it.
Well, now there, there you could, you can do that on a mountain bike, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Unfortunately. Yeah, you gotta have a dropper.
I figure.
I put, I put a dropper on my path bike. Uh, yeah, that's a must-have.
All I know is that my oldest daughter, her mountain bikes cost more than her car.
That's the goal, yeah. Yeah, you'll see that on bumper stickers, all kinds of places, but not hard to do these days.
All right, let's go, let's go ahead and get started. Scott will be here in a second. Uh, thanks, everybody, for being on our work session tonight. Uh, I've got a few items that I wanted, one of them to retouch on and one of them, um, that I want to table. But let's start out with, uh, the COBA proposal for the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park Trail Construction. As you know, council, uh, we signed an agreement with the Argo of, uh, $400,000 out of upfront, uh, advance for ticket, uh, fees, uh, to allow us to start building the trails in this park. Um, we applied for a grant several months ago, and if you remember, we were denied that grant. We didn't get it. And we kind of went back to CPW and GOCO and remodified our application and explained some things that we kind of thought was a little silly. Um, you know, why we would think that we wouldn't have, you know, dumpsters that were, uh, bear-proof and things like that. So we went back and we've been, um, told and advised that, um, we've got a very good chance of getting this grant, uh, from GOCO. Uh, Andy, you said that amount to me this morning. How much was that?
Uh, just got the call today from, uh, GOCO. They had a very competitive application cycle. And this is the last cycle for the resiliency grant, uh, applications. And they couldn't fully fund our, uh, requests, but they are recommending us for $100,000 for the GOCO.
And that, so that would be, um, um, even if we do it in phases, um, you know, that will, that will get us, uh, over a half a million dollars to, to build some trails in there.
Right, we've been, we have been recommended for, uh, $250,000 from, uh, CPW for the non-motorized grant. So, uh, that just has to go to their board for final approval, but it's all but certain we will receive that. And we'll know that in a couple of weeks, uh, that get the final, uh, word on that. And then we have the $100,000 that were recommended for GOCO, so that's 350 total. And then we have the $400,000 advance from, um, from Argo. So we have almost about $750,000 to work with, uh, this year for trail building.
Um, we entered into, uh, an MOU with COBA, um, probably been, what, Gary, eight months ago or so?
Yeah, it was just last year.
Okay, and, um, the, COBA has brought us a proposal. We need to start working on, um, getting lined up and ready for construction as soon as we get that money. We want to, we want to be in there starting to build these trails. So I'm just gonna kind of hand it over to, um, to Gary for a minute and kind of walk through, Gary, what you see happening next? Next steps and what you feel that the agreement, um, should be looking like, um, with bringing COBA on board.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I think, um, I think the proposal was included in your packet and, and what we're hoping to do tonight is just to kind of cover that. Make sure that it meets with council's, uh, desires and, and goals for this project. Um, make sure that we have this ready to go for your session next week so that, uh, we can hit the ground running. We really don't have any time to waste, um, with, even if we can start the RFP process as early as next week. Um, you know, that's gotta be out for thirty days and then you've got evaluations and then we pick contractors and make contracts and that goes back to city council. All before we can sort of get people, you know, contractors locked in on their schedule. Um, so really where we're at right now is, is COBA is offering to step up and be a project manager for this, both in terms of preparing the project, getting all the, the, um, requests for proposals done, um, you know, conduct the walk, the site walkthroughs with, uh, contractors that are interested in the job. All that work that goes into getting to the point where we have contractors lined up and, and ready to go for the summer. And then we think, you know, we also have the ability to manage the construction part of the process for you, uh, managing, you know, boots on the ground. Checking, you know, having construction documents, checking, you know, that they're staying within the flaglines and within, uh, the scope of the work. Um, reviewing invoices and approving those to pass on to the city for final approval and for payment. Just the, those kinds of things that I don't think that, that Andy and John really had the time for in their days. Um, so in talking with them, we've put together this, this way of going about, um, letting us do what, what we have a lot of experience in doing. Stepping in and finding the right contractors and getting these trails built the way that we've, we've, uh, all envisioned now for at least, what are we going on, four years now? We've been, uh, kind of getting through this process. Um, so, you know, knowing that we have the, the 750 in funding already lined up, we, you know, obviously we were hoping for more than that, but the grants, like, like Andy said, are super competitive. They had thirty-eight or thirty-nine applications for the follow-around of the resiliency, uh, grant program. They only awarded eight, so. And, you know, the, the budgets are tight, pools of money are tight. Uh, we feel pretty good that we've managed to get 350 between the two efforts here for just this year. And there's always a chance to, to hit the next round next year if we can't find ways to raise the additional private funds, um, to continue construction this year. But looking at that 750 that we have piled up so far, um, we've got RFPs that we're, we're completing now that will break this job into four different segments and two of those are kind of the crucial pieces, both for our partners at the Argo, as well as what the city has always put out as, as your primary objective or initial goal, which is to get the hiking amenities done first. So, and getting, you know, two of these RFPs done, uh, which would give us a way up and a way down for both hikers and bikers. Right now, in our budget, we have that 725, so it fits nicely in there. Uh, we've been pretty conservative in our estimates. We're expecting things to cost more than they did the last time we asked. Um, so there's a chance that we can do, you know, even better than that 725. But essentially what we're offering to do is just to kind of be the additional arm, uh, there for John and Andy and, and help manage this process.
Gary, have you talked at all with Argo with regard to their, um, Lumina project?
Uh, I'm aware of it. I know what, what they're doing and I know who they, I think Tony Boone is gonna build it. Um, but other than just, you know, kind of high-level conversations about alignments not, you know, being a problem.
Okay.
All right, um, what I will say is, um, Gary and COBA, from the very, um, beginning of this concept, uh, when Alan was still here, came in and has literally held our hands through this whole process. You know, without the COBA group being involved in this, we would never even be close to where we are now and ready for, ready for construction. So Gary, uh, to you and COBA, thank you so much for, for everything that y'all have done, uh, helping us understand. And like I said, hold our hands through this process because this is new to me and probably new to most of council, if not all of council, of building a trail system like this. And, and to bring, uh, you know, Tony in to do what he did and to bring y'all in to do what you did, you know, uh, thank you very much. I can't, I can't express my thanks enough to you.
Thanks, thanks for saying that. It's been our pleasure.
Yeah, so what we're looking at, um, I guess is to, of course, we're no action items tonight. Uh, first, I'd like to open it up for any council members that might have a question for Barb or Gary, um, or John Kane, because John Kane's been a big part of this as well.
Huge.
Man, council's getting soft on us here. All right.
The one thing there that I sent to, to Andy, um, and I don't know who else I sent it to, it's been a long day. Um, ju- just to remind you, the $400,000 is in section 2.2 of the PIA. And the one thing that it requires, and this is just important from a timing perspective, it requires that the city request that money from Argo and they have then sixty days to provide that money to the city. So that's just more in terms of timing, Gary. That might also help you.
So Andy, what do you see our next step is? Uh, getting in a formal agreement or?
Uh, yes, Mayor, what I would see, uh, we just wanted to bring this proposal tonight to the work session. Uh, again, we're trying to move things along, uh, because of the summer building schedule. But we wanted to have, uh, bring this to council tonight for, um, discussion, familiarity, and then if council's good with this proposal from COBA, it would be an action item at the regular meeting, uh, next week, March eighth. And that would establish COBA formally as the, uh, project manager for, for, uh, building the trails.
And I don't think that, uh, Gary could have expressed it enough that John and Andy don't have time to manage this project, so. Um, I think this is, will be, um, a great benefit for our community and to have COBA involved in, uh, managing this project.
You know, I would think that, uh, one reason why we don't have so many questions is because this was, uh, gone over very well, uh, back in August, when we were first talking about the, uh, the trail system, at least with this makeup of council. I, I just thought that, uh, you know, it was very well done and, uh, I myself was never, I've never been involved in any kind of a, a trail system. And we really hashed it out pretty well and our, our concerns were addressed. I'm glad Barb brought up this, uh, $400,000 because that's, that's pretty important.
Yeah, we need to, we need to request that now. Right, or yesterday. Thanks for those comments, Chuck. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I think our plans, uh, under the agreement, our plans are to, uh, make that request when we issue the RFPs, which is consistent with, uh, what the agreement says. So, um, and that, uh, that should work just about, that the timing should be pretty good there because, as Gary mentioned, it takes, uh, up to a month to do the formal RFP process, needs to be brought back to council for approval or, you know, based on our recommendations for trail construction and who should do that. And then, um, so that, that should work out pretty well.
Andy, the one thing that, the way in which the contract is written is that it renews automatically. So I don't know if there's action that is required by council because it reads the MOU shall remain in place until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. It will automatically renew for subsequent terms of one year, not to exceed four such renewal terms commencing on January first and ending December thirty-first until canceled by one party.
That was, if I can speak to that, that was the MOU that we signed last year, Barb, and, and what we're looking, in, in that MOU, we described that any work that COBA would do for the city that we would be billing for would be in a separate agreement.
Perfect.
So what we're trying to do now is establish that second agreement, um, which I don't think would have, it wouldn't be held to any of the terms of the MOU necessarily.
No, this is a separate agreement, yep.
Thanks for the clarification.
But to that point, if we need to include that kind of language, I mean, I, I did this proposal in sort of letter form just so we could talk through, you know, essentially what we think we could provide, what that would look like. Um, making that into more of a contract feel is certainly an option that we have before next. Or if you, if you all feel like, you know, this kind of covers it, we just need some basic legalese to go along with it, that's fine, too.
Sure, Gary, the, the, our city attorney, uh, has prepared a, um, template of a, uh, services contract, services agreement. So that covers all the legal and what we would do is just attach your proposal to that, um, service agreement. Uh, it's pretty, pretty straightforward there.
Good.
All right, we will get this thing moving and get it, uh, on our, our regular meeting next week for approval. Um, so we will be working on that and hopefully if everything goes well, we'll have a, um, agreement with you, Gary, and COBA to, to start the process on getting these trails done for us.
Awesome. We can't wait to start construction. Uh, you know, getting some dirt moved up there is gonna be a big day.
There you go. All right, thanks, Gary.
All right, thanks, y'all.
All right, we will go into our second item on the agenda for tonight. You know, council, we've been talking, uh, about inclusionary housing. Uh, we've tabled it a couple of times. Um, I, my personal thought is, is I, I really don't see the advantage of doing something like this right now for our community. And with everybody's blessing and okay, I, I'd like to just table this indefinitely and, and probably not bring it back up again. Uh, and now I'm gonna open up to council. If you think that we need to continue to this discussion and looking at inclusionary housing, then we'll keep the item open and, and, uh, have another work session on it. Another thing that I'd like to, uh, tell you that you don't probably know yet is Nina is no longer with, um, our attorney, uh, their firm. So Nina will not be, uh, planning commission anymore, that she was, she was doing most of that planning commission and some of our meetings. Uh, but she decided that she was gonna go out on her own. So we'll, we'll start seeing Carmen, um, um, expecting to see Carmen in our meetings when we need her until, uh, maybe in the future that they, they have somebody else that would fill in and do those, uh, types of things for their firm. Does anybody have any objection just to, to table this and, and us not bring it back up again until we really, you know, think that this is something we really need to discuss?
I, I totally support that decision.
Everybody?
I do, too. I do, too.
Thumbs up, or thumbs down? All right, looks like everybody agrees. So we'll just table this indefinitely and i- if we feel that this is something that we want to re-entertain uh, to council, it was just as easy as putting it on the meeting and talking about it again. So thank you for that.
Mayor, I just have one, one comment on that that you might want to consider. Um, one of the things that, when that was drafted up, I don't think that there's any consideration to the fact that, that all of Idaho Springs is an opportunity zone. And that opportunity zone bring, it's one of the reasons why you're seeing certain people invest now in Idaho Springs. So, so I also totally support withdrawing this ordinance because I think there's a lot more you can do, given that you're an opportunity zone.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Barb. All right, we'll move on. Um, our last item, um, is the COVID-nineteen dial change. Um, after our last meeting, when we said that we weren't going to allow special events and not have permits accepted to the city, literally the next day or two days after, all of a sudden, our, our COVID level went to a, another, you know, to blue, which allows, you know, quite a bit of things to happen under the blue level. Of course, there are still restrictions, um, that have to happen and guidance that has to happen under blue. Um, it's always been, it's also been noted that by midsummer, there's a good chance that we could be in green at that time. So what I would like to ask council and to put out to council is, um, there I go, being soft again. I've rethought this thing. And with the COVID level, uh, the levels getting less restrictive, I would like to propose to council for us to go ahead and start accepting and allowing special events.
Oh, my God.
Of course, they all have to, um, what? Who's yelling at me, Diane? You weren't muted, Diane, I heard you. Um, so accepting applications, what we want to do, and we had, Andy and I had a meeting with Dr. Ryan today, our public health director. And he agrees. He said, you know, you know, who knows what's gonna happen in a couple of months? So he's pretty supportive of us moving forward. Now, what they're doing, uh, right now and what we would put into our application is, one, um, you have to have a plan submitted to the public health, uh, county public health and signed off on. Right now, when I'm making these applications, it goes through Kelly with the fire authority, it goes through chief with local PD, you know, so i- it gets checked off for these. Um, what we would require is the same thing. They have to put out a plan, you know, I'm just looking, we got a sheet with our COVID thing. So say, say, somebody wanted to have a, an event over at the ball fields. So what would have to happen is they have to measure off that and they have to calculate it on how many people they can really have over there. You know, they have to come up with a plan, how they're gonna count these people. Are you gonna keep up with how many's coming into this event? What are you gonna do for enforcement? And, um, and also the caveat, oh, okay, so Dr. Ryan said also, four weeks before the event happened, they would have to come back in and have their plan reevaluated to see if there's any less restriction or more restriction that would have to be, um, put on the event. And, and, and that's good, too. Also, what we would put on the application is an asterisk. Um, you, you know, this has to go through public health and, uh, re, re, um, evaluated four months or four weeks before the event. Also, in there that you understand that if we get more restrictive, that the city has all rights to pull the permit on the event and, and not allow you to have it. And with no, uh, monetary recourse on the city or any, uh, any of us. Um, I believe that, uh, that, um, most of our events can plan out and, and, um, a- and have an event under these requirements and do it. Um, Dr. Ryan voiced his opinion about bicycle races and marathon races. He said, but those are fine, um, except the beginning and the end. You know, once they're out running or walking and once they're out on their bicycles, they're, they're far enough apart that it doesn't matter. I- it's the gathering, like the, like the, uh, triple bypass or the Bob Cook that ends here next to Tommy Nocturne, and they got a hundred and fifty people in a very tight area drinking beer and, and, you know, talking to each other. So, you know, we need to be real careful on those types of events because they're much different. There's really no way for them to lay out, you know, are we gonna put, you're gonna put X's all over the ground and have those bicyclists stand on those X's because that's four feet, uh, six feet apart. Very difficult to do. So I want to open it up to council and get your thoughts. Do you think this is a good idea? Do you think that, uh, city staff, uh, can keep an eye on this and PD, uh, to make sure that everything is being done properly? And, uh, and Diane, um, having to keep up with it, make sure that everything is being checked off and signed and done properly.
Mayor, it seems to me that, uh, Dr. Ryan is an epidemiologist. And, uh, I, I would have to think that if, uh, somebody can put forth, uh, you know, a plan that passes most with the health department, uh, we're probably gonna have a very safe event.
All right, thanks for that, Chuck. Scott?
Seems to me with the comments from the public health authorities that, uh, we do need to go ahead. But the, uh, event organizers obviously have to remain flexible and understand the rug can be pulled out from under them. And I think if that's clear, very clear from the beginning, so there's no argument, uh, we'll let them take that chance.
All right, thanks, Bob. Scott?
Yeah, I, I felt, I, I kind of tend to feel this way at the last, uh, meeting we had. Because we can't predict the future, I mean, we're all hopeful things will be better. We don't know where they're gonna be. So with the stipulation that we can cancel the event, they're just gonna have to understand that. And then I think we're covered by running it through the health department. It's gonna be their recommendations to us how we handle that. So I'm good with, you know, giving them the opportunity to file for the event, but we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen when it actually is time for the event.
Yeah, and when Dr. Ryan said that that check-in, that four-week check-in, that re- really resonated with me as well. Because then they can take that document, go back to say, then because, because in essence, if all of a sudden we go to green, at that point, they may be able to allow more people into their event. So, so it goes both ways. It can also be an advantage to, to the event, uh, itself. So, so i- it could be one way or the other. Jim, you got any comments?
No, I think, uh, yeah, I agree with everybody. I think everybody's pretty much on the same page with it.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, John Curtis?
Yeah, I, I, I agree, especially with vaccines going, vaccinations going out like they are now.
And that's the other thing that Dr. Ryan said. He's hopeful, of course, right now he, he continues to come on our meetings and says that, you know, we have a community to the west of us that got eighteen thousand. Uh, of course, their, their community's a little bigger, but eighteen thousand compared to us getting a hundred. You know, that's, he still can't figure out what's going on and I know that, uh, public health is doing everything they can do. But that was also what he said is hopefully by, you know, summer, midsummer, there were, in our community, uh, might have a very high vaccine rate, you know, and, and moving along. So that's, that was good to hear as well. Chief, would you, your last night? Uh, if everybody didn't know, this is at midnight tonight. Chief is done. So if you're gonna do something, go out about eleven-thirty tonight, cause some trouble. So he has to get out of bed and come out for the call. No.
Well, I'll be leaving my radio here and Hannings on duty tonight, so I wouldn't recommend it.
Do you have any last thoughts about going this?
So I, I just again wanna thank, you know, this city council and the previous city council for this opportunity. It's been a, you know, really wonderful five years. And as you know, you know, it wasn't my intent to leave town, although it was my intent to retire, but you know, you understand duty, duty calls elsewhere. So, um, anyway. Yeah, this'll, this'll be my last meeting as, um, as chief, but I think you may see me sitting in on some meetings as, uh, citizen Chris Malanca. And, um, of course, I'm gonna remain available to mark, um, at least through the month to help with, uh, some of our documentation for, for city council and the like. So, thank you. Thank you, chief.
All right, okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll direct staff to go ahead and then allow, uh, first we'll have to, we're gonna get with Diane and Carmen to, to look at the, the application, get these things, uh, installed in there so there is a, 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 a little bit lengthier of a checklist. And, and, um, see how many people start coming to us for, for event, uh, permits.
Mike, do you happen to know, is there any early summer events? Because I just, um, I would just guess that as we get later in summer, that the restrictions get better. That a June event might have a harder time with more restriction than an August or September event.
Yeah, a- a- and that's the thing, that's the four-week check-in, you know, i- if somebody gets an application, play, you know, which means basically they're gonna have to have their application in four weeks before the event. I mean, if they apply now and, and at the end of March, they're gonna have their, there's really no second view of it because it's four weeks. So these people can't wait to the last minute to get these. If somebody comes in three weeks, i- i- if they schedule their event and two and a half weeks later wanna have the event. We need to figure out if that would really, I guess that, uh, it would already gone through public health. We, we still got some things to work out on this. I think the initial idea was to bring this to council tonight, getting support from everybody for Diane to start accepting applications for special, um, events and, uh, getting the application where we want it to with the lines for them to sign on that they understand these caveats to the, um, to the permit.
One other question I would have too is, uh, I know chief won't be here, but if there's restrictions on these events and people aren't abiding by those restrictions, who is the authority on that?
Well, if, if they're sanctioned, if they're sanctioned events, there, there will be public safety there. We are still, um, one of the seven IGA members for the Colorado Rangers. Um, and I've already spoken to, um, um, Nathan Busek about our partnership with them. You know, ultimately I would hope it would never come to that, but you know, some of, most events, they do really good at policing themselves. The big thing is gonna be controlling access, you know, if they, if they set up a cap on the number of people that can attend an event. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna, essentially gonna have to have, um, hard entrances to, to ensure that, um, um, you know, we stick to that number. So ultimately, if, you know, if events are allowed to, um, occur, events that we traditionally didn't have public safety present, then, um, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna, we're gonna have to step to the plate. There, there are some events, you know, there are different events, you know, there're gonna be some events that are in fenced areas. And then there're gonna be events like, uh, dynamite days and of course the races where there's really no control on, on how people congregate. So essentially it'd be up to the city and our partners, whether it's the rec center or the county, um, to ensure we call through the types of events we can actually have.
All right, thanks chief.
So, uh, can we require them to have a public safety officer?
Yeah.
At the, at the events, no?
Absolutely. So the Rangers, the Rangers don't cost them anything but meals. So, you know, if they plan ahead, that, that won't be a problem. But once again, you know, let's take the baseball field or digger field, that's a fenced area with controlled access points. Easier than, you know, again, events like dynamite days, um, or, um, the, the borough races where, you know, people may mass in different locations, we don't have any control.
Right, any other questions?
I think that the, the review of the plan will be kinda, will be a telltale whether or not we think there's gonna be control of that event, I think.
Right, and that's what, uh, you know, that is what Diane will be asking those questions, yeah, you know, you can't, how are you gonna control, you know, an event? It's, and, and I'll just throw a farmer's market at Courtney Riley. How would they control, you know, that event? Because they can come in from every direction. You know, if you have an event over at the baseball field, there's actually a gate there that you make everybody come through that gate. You have a clicker, just like Safeway did, or not Safeway, but Walmart. You know, as people go in, you click them, as people come out, you back them off and you control it that way. But that would be part of the application of saying this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna have somebody at the gate. People and you're sure that we don't go over our capacity. Okay. Um, that's all we have for tonight. Unless y'all wanna stick around and talk more on these items, we can't talk about other items.
Chief, we're gonna miss ya.
Absolutely.
Yep, thanks chief. Um, it's been a pleasure, uh, we've expressed that to you many times and, um, chief and I on Wednesday, and Wednesday, Andy, we're gonna take, uh, chief's plaque that we got him and we're gonna do a little, uh, in-person, me handing it to him and get some pictures and things like that for, you know, for our files and for chief's files. Right, thanks everybody. At six thirty-six and we can adjourn our meeting. Great night.